Right. What did you? He's to die of God.
And to the remembrance of the witness stands in the blood nation of your God. Indemnize the vote.
Good.
The witness.
You're wrong. Bah.
Please take roll.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Now would you?
Mr. Samansky.
Present.
Mr. Mimberto. Mr. Weiner. Mr. McBride. Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Ms. Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we'd like to amend the agenda tonight. We are moving uh the correspondence up uh into uh just behind the approval of minutes. So with that um approval of agenda at this time, the planning commission can't take action to approve the February fourth, two thousand twenty-one agenda.
I make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bob, second by Mick, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Mr. Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Mr. Mimberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
I got it.
Unmute.
Roger. That's not moving here.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. Approval of minutes at this time, the planning commission can't take can approve the January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one special meeting for organizational purposes, minutes, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Nick, second.
Second.
By Shelley, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Mr. Slawinski.
Yes.
Mr. Samansky.
Yes.
Mr. Mimberto.
Yes.
Mr. Weiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Roger.
Yes.
Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. And now we will move into correspondence, so I will hand it over to Mike and Zach.
All right, Mike, you want me to go first?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I've got four online here and I think Mike's or I've got five and Mike's got four here, so the first one. Manistee City Planning Commission, I understand that this that a proposal to build Hampton Inn on the Lake Shore Motel property will be presented February four. As you consider this, please consider my great concerns. I live near First Street Beach, so I am passionate about how a five-story hotel in the middle of a beachfront park would permanently devastate the open waterfront. If you look at the micro hotel across from Meyer, you you see a dominating presence at even half its length and it is only three stories high. If I were a visitor to to use First Street Beach, I would have second thoughts about using a beach next to a towering commercial presence. No matter how this hotel is presented, there would be an offense an offensive building with excessive height, light, noise, traffic, and parking on our precious beach. I also wonder how many trees would be lost to this hotel. I wonder how difficult parking would be when I hope when hotel customers don't leave in the morning. So I am passionate to protect and preserve this space for Manistee as well. The proposed hotel is not simply a business consideration. It would profoundly have a negative impact on the open beachfront area. There are many other ways to bring economic growth to Manistee without ruining the waterfront with this oversized hotel. There is already one a one hundred room hotel plan for downtown Manistee. What a unique and amazing opportunity the city has to buy this Lake Shore motel property and incorporate it into the present park area. According to the news advocate on January twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy assisted several areas in Benzie County to secure grants from the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund to preserve and improve beach and other area sites. There are some highly significant funding amounts. This kind of funding secured man-made lake for public use, how wonderful it is. How wonderful if this is done for Manistee at First Street Beach. I love living in Manistee. I chose to live here primarily because of the open park waterfront beach area on Lake Michigan, which is a big draw to many people, both visit local and visitors. It break it breaks my heart that our precious open Lake Michigan waterfront would be considered not enough value to protect it from commercial development. The bottom line is that no amount of economic benefit that might come from this proposed hotel can compensate for the immeasurable loss it would be to our priceless beach area. Please do not allow this hotel to be built on the Lake Shore motel property. Look at the bigger look at the bigger picture of protecting and preserving Manistee Lake waterfront as natural areas for generations to come. Kathy Butler, Manistee.
To the planning commission, I'm writing to you as a concerned taxpaying citizen of Manistee. I subscribe to the Manistee advocate so that I can learn about what is happening in our area. I read with interest the article in the January twenty-first newspaper, which quoted Mr. Secole and explained the process for new developments. He said if a person had concerns about developments and could not attend to me, they were encouraged to voice their concerns via letter or email to the planning commission. Thus, I am writing to share my concerns about the proposed Hampton Beach Inn by the First Street Beach. I'm disappointed that the property there might be allowed to have a five-story structure by the developers. I see a huge structure of that sort as an eyesore and taking away from the natural beauty of the area. The current motel that is there is much more low-key and even painted as to blend in with the area. The trees often hide it, so you do not know what is there. To put in a five-story hundred-room hotel does not seem to enhance that area. We do not live in Miami or Cancun there where there are many hotels lining the beaches. First Street Beach is a small beach surrounded by dunes and trees, parks, and playgrounds. The buildings there are low-key to serve the public for concessions or picnicking. I would be more in favor of keeping our beach more in line with it is with as it is now. Aside from taking away the beauty of the area, a hotel of that size does not make sense to me because it does not seem necessary. The current motel fills up in the summer, but not so in the winter. I do not think a five-story hotel right there would be would be full year-round. If it were, the traffic to that area and the parking issues would be present problems for those citizens that wouldn't hear year-round and would like to have the access to the beach and area around it. I agree with people. I agree with the people who have gotten their letters to the editor published in the paper that are opposed to having a five-story hotel there. We have hotels out on US thirty-one that have empty rooms. There is a hundred-room hotel proposed to be put at the entrance of River Street. We have a bed and breakfast and rentals and other smaller motels or hotels that do not need any more competition right now. Yes, this is a tourist town, but I just do not see see the same dollar signs that the outside developer sees when proposing to generate something that will add to our economy. The big-city developers do not live in small towns or understand our economy, in my opinion. Promising that they will add thirty-five new jobs is only a wish if the hotel fills up. Often, those are only part-time jobs and the people with full-time positions are moved in from other locations. Recently, a letter to the editor in the newspaper was written by someone who visits here and does not live here full-time. The person could not understand why somebody would be opposed to a hotel on the beach and not want to live and would not want to have tourists able to enjoy what we have. I say I'm glad they have tourists in our town and enjoying what we have and spending money in our stores. They have many hotels to choose from to stay in and can still have access to the public beach, in my opinion, they do not need to be in a huge structure that takes over an area in the size and looks therefore, excuse me, let me read that. They do not need to be in a huge structure that takes over the area in size and looks and therefore takes away from the year-round taxpaying citizens have to use and enjoy. Thank you for reading my opinion and possibly taking it into some consideration, as well as those of others who have been opposed before final plans and decisions are made. Sincerely, Manistee City resident, Mary Maureen.
Can you spell that last name for me, please?
Yes, it is Mike Oscar Echo Hotel Romeo India November Golf.
All right. Manistee City Planning Commission, to my understanding, there is a proposed there is proposed to be a Hampton Inn built on Lake Shore Motel property. My concerns to this proposal include the height of the hotel, five stories and how would this how this would block the view of Lake Michigan, let alone the lighting involved at the building and parking area. This would also disrupt disrupt the view in the neighborhood. In Traverse City, the lake shore is outlined with hotels as well as well, along with the beautiful bay and the public beach area has been very limited. I live on First Street on the channel and would love to see our beautiful open beach area maintained. We are very fortunate to have two beaches in the town that are public. I believe they need to be protected and honored. I believe more thought and investigation into their options should be looked into in regard to this matter. The area should be protected from commercialism. Once the once the natural area is gone, it can never be restored. I do not support building a five-story hotel on this property. Polly Vitaric, Manistee.
To the City of Manistee Planning Commission in regards to the proposed Hampton Inn at First Street Beach from George Butler, five forty-seven First Street, Manistee, Michigan, dated January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. To those charged with responsibility, please do not lose the delicate balance of the city development and natural protection. Our left hand should not fight our right hand. You know of the great work to protect our natural resources, our greatest resources in Northwest Michigan. City commercial development must not crowd and thus defeat our natural assets. Please do not allow our city interests to overreach at First Street Beach. This is your responsibility. Thank you, George. Signed, George Butler, care pastor here at the Tabernacle Church, Manistee, Michigan.
Dear Planning Commission members, I grew up in Manistee County and spent the last forty-five years in Traverse City, Michigan, before returning to Manistee to live. As such, I saw the efforts to plan and control the growth in that area. Seeing the proposed replacement of the of the motel located at First Street Beach, I felt I must respond to such a development. With fourteen years in in commercial building management, I am aware of the problems of localization of location utilization and the attending and the attending traffic and parking issues. I'm not opposed to the to controlled growth and hope Manistee can develop into a community which is which is a blend of manufacturing, residential, retail, and tourism. One of the ways Traverse City plans succeed plan. One of the ways Traverse City planning succeeded in protecting against an influx of high-rise buildings blocking the waterfront view was to prevent any construction on the waterfront over three stories. I would urge you to consider such a long-term protective measure when seeing precedence when setting precedence for waterfront development. Here are two ideas for planning and protecting your beautiful beachfront growing forward from this time. The city itself should consider applying to the Natural Resources Trust Fund to secure funding to purchase this particular parcel of land for the exclusive use of residents and visitors alike. These funds are provided provided by oil and gas production in Michigan and this locality would be a perfect use for these funds. If you could obtain these funds for a parkland at this location, you might you might be providing additional maintenance jobs for several persons. If the Hampton Inn goes forward into a with a beachfront high-rise structure, you could control the size and impact of the surrounding area by setting restrictions on height and area impact controls. Restrict the height to three or less floors to fit in with nearby homes and structures. You could restrict light pollution with the use of low-height signage, hooded and downward exterior lighting, as well as lower-height downward parking light parking lot lighting. The Hampton Inn box at any restriction to this location, I'm I'm sure this property would be of great interest to other developers. Perhaps the Hampton Inn could purchase the corner at US thirty-one Bridge where the car wash is for sale. They could build higher, be within walking distance to downtown and could provide shuttle service to the beaches, thus reducing trap beach traffic. You, as a governing body, are charged with the large responsibility of city growth while maintaining a visionary plan for long-term growth and potential future employment. Thank you for your commitment. Sincerely, Linda S. Assalia, three four seven Lighthouse Way, Manistee, Michigan.
Hi, my name is Julie Beardsley. We have met in the past. I'm a taxpayer, my family owning three homes in the city. I have lived in the community for forty-seven years and worked in the field of property tax administration for the city and county governments for forty years. My family has had a business and on River Street for almost forty years. I have a unique perspective and I hope that you will value my opinion. Please forward my comments to the planning commissioner members. I understood that the commission was seeking public comments. Feel free to forward it onto the city manager and I do not have his email address. I want to express my appreciation of your efforts with the planning and zoning in regards to the city of Manistee. I know how difficult contracting work with this city can be, being a former city employee. I feel strongly regarding short-term rentals. Your place in the untenable situation with little to no direct uh city direction or support. Same old or same old table, but a different and controversial subject. My hopes are with the pending changes in the city government stamp, we will be able to progress to the future of vision of economic development development, vision being primary, the stage is set economically and energetic and forward-thinking actors are really in this need during the current city administration, public input regarding development is not wanted but encouraged, definitely not heated and sometimes punished. This was made apparent during the process to do with the now-defunct Olson's Development and Hollinger's proposed development where the uh West Shore Community College building is presently located. Hence to the subject, very little information seems to be available regarding the First Street Beach Hotel or potential hotel development of the Lake Shore Motel. I will reply to the subject with little limited knowledge is in my apologies. The project is just too much development for the site. The site will need extensive asphalt, parking, sewer, water, and infrastructure. Who pays, including a complete rebuild of loop? In the interests of public safety, I regularly attend the shoreline showcase jazz concerts in the summer with my son, who uses a wheelchair. Believe me, you take your life in your hands with negotiating handicapped parking and traffic. There are less than one hundred attendees at the time and it really and it is really, excuse me, and it is really too many people for the parking lot loop area. Can you imagine what it would be like with an additional two hundred hotel guests? No way, all summer long? It sounds like a destruction of the First Street Beach and the beauty of the loop. Wasn't the proposed development four stories? A wall to block the view of the Lake Michigan from the substantial area of the south loop? The development resembled a prison, definitely had that feel. How does that fit in with the Victorian port city image we have spent millions trying to achieve? I know it is not in the historical district, but still, can't we just work towards appropriate development in accordance with the theme? All you have to do is look at the West Shore Community College Development on River Street to see what can be achieved with architectural plans for modern building. A building sensitive to the historical theme, which is very is at the very soul of Manistee. Corporations have canned designs which they are unwilling to change. Look at the Meyer store on one-of-a-kind river frontage to which the corporation gave no consideration. What a beautiful outdoor dining experience you could have built there as part of the store. It is too expensive for corporations to use a more specialization approach design. I have little to no hope that the Hampton Inns can be challenged to change the design to fit the historically themed city. It will just be another ugly hotel on overcrowded beach. I know we can do better. It is time to collect the self-esteem of the city be elevated enough to know we have a choice. We don't have to take the scraps thrown to us. After all, it is not function of planning and zoning to monitor economic developments to provide the ultimate and best effort, excuse me. After all, is it not the function of planning and zoning to monitor economic development? To provide the ultimate and best effort development in the city? Economically, good designs benefit all commercial development and the bottom line. I do not believe in the long run that any real increase to the tax base will occur with the Hampton development. There are a multitude and variety of tax property tax programs to allow Hampton to take advantage of the sizable tax exemption. I appreciate the opportunity to respond to the planning's commission request for opinions. There are four members of my family and all agree with the content of this letter. Sincerely, Julie Beardsley.
Good afternoon, Mark. I feel that replacing a Lake Shore Hotel is great for the city and the community of Manistee, I feel. It will create new jobs, build a facility that is that the people of Manistee can be proud of and give us the ability to show off our Class A beaches and our community. Not to mention the snowball effect it will have on the rest of the shops up and down River Street. I am in full support of this project. Respectfully, Jeff Singh, Singh's Marina, thirty-three Lake Street, Manistee, Michigan.
Your commissioners, as kids growing up downstate, the absolute most anticipated time of year wasn't Christmas, but rather the two weeks in summer when dads took their vacation time, which meant we'd be going up north. My up north was camping at Lake Charlevoix, Platte River, and Lake Michigan. For my husband, it was Benzone and Crystal Lake. For both of us, it was swimming in cold, clear lakes, playing on sugar sand beaches, canoeing, hiking, watching sunsets, building bonfires, and stargazing. It was a different world from Ann Arbor and Pontiac, full of natural wonders and unsullied beauty. It has been the great gift of our lives that we have been able to spend our working years up north in Manistee and now our retirement surrounded by all the things we loved as kids. So it it has with a fair degree of horror that we read about the proposed five-story Hampton Inn at the First Street Beach. Others have presented many compelling arguments in opposition to this, which we both agree with, so I won't repeat them, except to say that if the area is not big enough to accommodate the necessary infrastructure, i.e. parking, sewage, etc., then this location should not be given considered or should not be considered. We only have to look at our look out our front window on Bryant Avenue to see the effects of trying to shoehorn a building in and without adequate real estate. We are not opposed to progress or change, that's not the issue. What we do object to is not respecting the integrity and beauty and the uniqueness of an area. People come to Manistee for the same reasons our families came up north when we were kids. It's a different way or it's a different from where they live. If we make it the same by adding multi-story commercial buildings, we've negated that which was desirable and sought out. We believe that it is our responsibility to protect and preserve our playgrounds, picnic areas, and beachfront, not just for now, for us, but for all those who seek their serenity, tranquility, and majest and majesty that has been part of up north generally and First Street Beach specifically. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should and it's not progress when you destroy that which makes you unique. What we have is a precious and special and beautiful and we need to cherish and celebrate it, not erase it. We hope the city will consider the proposal for this hotel in this location and continue to maintain. We hope that city will consider the proposal for this hotel in this location and continue to maintain the character and charm that defines Manistee and First Street Beach. Thank you for reading. Very sincerely yours, Pete and Mary Jo Solwold. I I don't know if I said that right, it's spelled S.O.L.W.O.L.D.
City of Manistee Planning Commission, if the two-acre properties zone light residential at First Street Beach is sold and developed as a five-acre hotel or a five-story hotel, I'm sorry, it would become the most prominent feature on the Manistee Lakefront skyline, more than the sand dunes, the Coast Guard Building, the harbor, or the lighthouse. This unique location surrounded by parkland would come under control of the hotel conglomerate now and into the future. The city needs to keep control of this small parcel by using critical restrictions or by ownership. Jane Shimkey, Manistee resident.
And I think that's all of them. Mike, you don't have one, do you?
I'm good, that's it.
Is it? All right, thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment on agenda-related related items? Anyone in the public would like to comment on the agenda? Name and address, please, and you have you'll have up to three minutes. So if there's anyone, please notify Mike.
So the person with last four digits of their phone number, seven six one eight, do you have anything to say?
Can you unmute them?
Yeah, they have to press star six.
Star six?
Yep.
Uh, no further comments. You read both of our letters, George and Kathy Butler. And uh we we just, again, we're not against growth. My goodness, we'd like to see a lot of growth, but not to uh outweigh uh the natural areas. We want the natural areas protected, uh including that hotel area. If that can become a public area, that would be marvelous. I think that's really the way to go. So I'd like to encourage that, but a hotel, uh there's lots of places for a hotel that don't have to crowd our beach.
I talked to someone, this is Kathy Butler on First Street. Um, someone who has tried to buy that property to make a or build a two- or three-story hotel to keep it in character and they were always denied that over the past three years. I'm not advocating that other than to keep things in perspective and my greater desire would be for the city to be able to buy or get a hold of that property and turn it into the park, which is what it needs to be done in the first place. It is a park area and we're trying to change what the original zoning was and that to me is very wrong. I absolutely love our beachfront, I walk here all the time, it's a big part of why we live here and it breaks my heart to think that this could be ruined, destroyed by a five-story commercial business that does not belong there.
Thanks. Okay, as as a reminder, these are for agenda-related items, so the the Lake Shore project is not isn't on the agenda. Um.
That Zach, let them let them know, though, that there is a another public comment in communications section that's later in.
Towards towards the end, yeah, you will have public comments.
Not it's not it's not that they don't want to hear it, it's just they're looking for public comment on the.
I I let that go because they did they did just have a letter read, so that I I let that go, so.
Okay, Richard Blue, you have, do you have anything to say about agenda-related items?
No, we don't. Thank you.
Aaron Glenn, do you have anything to say about agenda-related items?
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Willie, do you have agenda-related items? Comments?
No, sir, not at this time.
That's all, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Dick.
New business, we have none.
It's muted or not?
Old business, uh, we have none. Public comments and communication. First, resident canvases the commission on interest of allowing a residential dwelling above the Marijuana Provisioning Center in the Marijuana Overlay District.
Okay, well, I'll hand it over here to Willie here.
Uh, hi, guys, Willie McKenzie, uh, owner of Authentic Two Three One Heritage Farms, Manistee. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight, appreciate you having me. My question is, I'm interested in kind of gauging the committee's temperature on why residential units were not allowed above or in conjunction with marijuana businesses in the in the MSO. I don't know if you've seen our building or been there, but we did a really good job building it out. We made a really nice apartment upstairs. It's an extremely safe location. And so I guess I'm kind of wondering what the thought is. Um, I mean, people are allowed to live above bars, people are allowed to live above restaurants. Those are not regulated industries. We are heavily regulated, heavily secure. And uh so before I go to make some sort of a a change to the special use permit or or to the zoning ordinance, I just kind of wanted to gauge your temperature on that.
Uh, Mike, when when the marijuana overlay district was set, I believe in in a lot, we had a lot of commissioners, we did talk about this.
So.
I think in the uh in the old charter building.
Wasn't this was before my time, Mark. I so like, when you guys set this up, it was in twenty eighteen, it was before we came on with the city, so.
Mark. Hey, Mark, well, we looked at a lot of it was was security reasons because somebody not related to the business could be actually could uh break into the place below. We we were concerned about that, but if this is going to be somebody related to the business, it might be a different situation. We didn't want an outside person that doesn't relate it to the business in there having the opportunity for them to break down into the business. That makes sense?
That makes sense. I tell you something.
This is this this.
This is, this, this is Mick. I thought there was also some state regulations that, uh, there was some prohibit, uh, that prohibited having residential in, in the same location as marijuana retail or drill facilities.
Roger?
Yes, the reason the replacement was put out on the highway because there were no residential. We tried to keep it away from the residents. Now, with this application or consideration, that's something we didn't think about, Louis. We wanted to put, they wanted to come in, we wanted to put the buildings at a good location, try to keep it away from the residents, and that's why it was placed where it was. So anything after that, it's up to you guys.
Sure.
I also remember that when we were discussing this, we also didn't want any children to have access to it. If, if there was going to be residents above it, we didn't want any children around as well. That was a comment, too.
Alright.
You know, speaking for myself, I think this is too much too soon for that district. We, we haven't fully developed the licenses that we already have. And bringing this to the public again, I think would, would be detrimental to the overall district. Just my opinion.
Willie, did you, were you planning on making it a market rental, or did you have an employee or somebody in mind already?
Yeah, so, you know, I brought, you know, the management of these marijuana facilities is pretty specialized. So we did hire ten local people from the community to work there. But the management, I did have to bring up from Lansing. And as everyone here is probably well aware, long-term rentals are extremely difficult to find. So we've currently got her in a short-term rental, which is going to run out in June. And she really likes the location, and we would really like to have her there. I know it's an extremely safe place for her to be. We did a great job rehabbing the unit. And, you know, nothing like the commute where you have to walk twenty feet to work.
I just joined in, Willie.
Hi, Diane.
Hey.
Now, Diane, are you manager at the facility?
Yes, I am.
And Diane, what's your last name?
Brown. So there's a, Mike, you'll have to forgive me and, and Mark. This is before my time, too. So there's a special use permit now? What would, what would it entail?
So this would be a, this would have to come in as an amendment because it's, it's not a use that really currently allowed in there, so you'd have to amend those uses within there to allow for it. Now, with canvassing, and just to be clear, you guys are not making any decisions tonight. This would have to go before the, um, coming out here, Zach. I'm sorry, I'm blanking.
The, the special use permit would come, would come up again before that.
Have to amend it, yeah, to allow for this use. But the, the, um, depending on how it was looked at, would be, you know, the direction that we have the applicant going. You know, really with the canvassing is, you know, they can kind of gauge how the board, their feelings on it, and see if they should make their decision on moving forward. It's, it's kind of a cost-saving measure, so that they're, they're just not, have no, absolutely no chance of passing this. And then, and then they're throwing their money out the window. They kind of engage the board and say, hey, you know, this is something that they may or may not. But no motions or directions to be given tonight. I just want to be very clear on that.
One thing I've been thinking on this, since it's completely related to the business, we almost could consider it part of an extension of this security system of the building. Then almost could fall under that a little bit, and maybe something we might want to look at and explore.
This, uh, this particular parcel seems like the only one in the marijuana overlay district that has housing connected to it.
That's true.
Potentially, there's the, the one next door, if they were to put, you know,
upstairs.
Yeah, I think it's got a tall enough area that they might be able to put some kind of residence in there. But, um, kind of like with the ironworks, you guys, you know, there's, there's the ability to utilize portions of that building, but for a grow facility, but I believe it's forty-nine percent of it can be used for the grow facility. And it could off, it could be the other way, it's fifty-one percent. I have to verify that. But they have to have complete separation of the two areas, not the, they cannot have similar access.
Is that considered just, what would be considered separate, just to?
So for the ironworks buildings, when it was approved, you guys approved, they had to put in a complete wall that was unaccessed. You couldn't access it from the other side. And I can't remember if it was brick, or if it was, if it had to be like a steel or a drywall. I don't remember.
It had to be something that was not easy to penetrate.
Right. And so I, I don't recall the exact specification on it, but that was something that was allowable on the Peninsula District at that time. But, um, yeah, so.
I got a question for Willie on this. The way the apartment is set up upstairs, is there any access to the lower level from inside at all?
No.
No? Okay. So that may-
No.
That may come into play on some stuff for security.
Yeah, neither is accessible from the other.
We, we've actually-
The way we built it out, it's two completely separate.
Yeah, we walked through it as part of our inspection, and we can say that, that is the case.
Any other questions by the commission? Roger? Yeah, Roger? Any other?
Yeah. Not a question, but I'm just saying if we open a, if we are going to open a can of worms by letting this, if this does pass to the next building. It's like Mike, or Mike was saying, yeah, anything is, they could build on top of any of those buildings. I mean, the idea was to keep it away from the residents. So we'd be defeating the purpose if we let it, so that's all I got to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Any others? And if there isn't any other questions, what are the, what are the feelings of the commission? Of course, this is an official, so.
Well, I'll start it. In the short time I've been on this commission, nearly every single meeting, availability of housing has come up. And again, I don't, I don't know, I'm not going to pretend to know what the rules are just yet, but if there could be some stipulation that some of those residences had to be tied to employees, I like the idea of the work-life balance. I mean, we've been trying to figure out workforce housing for some places, and if, and if some of these owners are willing to invest in their own businesses and, and take that cost on. I, I just, I don't see what the downside is. Maybe some of you do, but I don't.
Thanks, Shelley.
I will ask an additional question on that, because Shelley, you did bring it up. Willie, are you guys open to a deed restriction that limits us to employees only?
Yeah, so the way that I was planning to propose it would be employee housing, essentially.
Yeah, I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon.
Right, so like if, for whatever reason, Diane were to leave.
Willie, you froze up.
I think Willie froze up, Diane.
Yep, he's definitely frozen.
Well, the temperature has dropped significantly over.
It wouldn't be something that we would, I would never- I'd like to think it up a little bit.
No, we, we missed your entirety. So if you could go through that again, Willie, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's snowing pretty hard over here. It would be, only employee housing was the way that I planned to propose it.
So what would happen if you separated employment? I would assume that there would have to be something written in about a timeframe or?
Yeah, like if Diane was to leave, if she was to quit, which, please don't quit Diane.
Not happening.
Then, then it would, you know, she would move out of the apartment, and it would only be available to somebody else who worked with us.
Alright. Again, I, I will ask the question, and Shelley brought up a point, but what is, what is the temperature of the?
Roger's got something to say.
If you don't mind, would you, if, if I could, now, if we did anything to change it, would it go if this person sold it to another eight, another party? Would that all go together, or how would that all work? Just something to think about.
If it was allowable in the, in the district, and the special use were to be transferred to another individual, it would, it would transfer with the property. I, I'm envisioning if you guys did something like this, it would be a deed restriction or something that, or a stipulation of the special use permit that basically says the only employees can live there. And then they have to, you can even, I'd say you go as far as, you know, have them provide, you know, employee records that show that's who live, is who lives there. I mean, there's, there's a multitude of ways to do this, but really, you guys are, you're not making a decision tonight, but it's good to talk about.
Yeah, that's a thought, that's all.
You could just restrict it in that way and tie it to the stipulation of the retail of the marijuana. So if that, if that use ended, then they would, they would lose that special use permit, that stipulation of that, whatever they agree to on it, and then it would, it would end at that point. You could make that a stipulate, a stipulation. So if the, if the marijuana retail were to stop and a different use went in there, you know, it wouldn't be affected by that restriction. But the special use would be terminated after that, after I believe one year. But you guys could put additional stipulations that say, like, you don't have to wait at that, on at that point, you know, it would immediately terminate or immediately whatever, you know, there's, there's ways of doing this. Where you guys could be very, we want, you know, weekly inspections, you know, you can, you can, you can say whatever you want. And if they agree to it, then that's kind of how it works. So if you, I'm not, I'm not proposing weekly inspection for any means, but I'm just letting you know what, what can be negotiated. So when you guys are looking at stipulations, it's really important, especially for any use really that you guys really laid out there, like what you want to see. So if you want to see, you know, yearly, whatever, you know, or, you know, quarterly, or, or whatever, you can, you can request those things. And if they agree to them, then that's, that's part of the stipulation of granting it. So that's why you give them the right to do that. So just keep that in mind on this project and other ones, if this is even a project or if he brings it forward, so.
The one thing I see, this is the only building in that district was multiple-story. The other ones, none of them are, so we could actually keep it, is they are not allowed to raise or add on to the buildings any residents of some type.
Well, that, that's really not true, because again, the hotel property is multi-story. So is the state police building is multi-story. So there are other facilities, so is the place on the corner, the red, red. Yep, so.
I also caution against that. It's, it's almost, it's a, you'd be very careful with, with restrictions like that as well. Because you're restricting properties in, in a district. And if only one was allowed to, and you restricted the others, you're, you're almost offering an unfair market advantage in your spot, to an extent.
Yeah, and that's my point. There are, there are other facilities in that, in that location that, that could apply depending on, on other circumstances. And, and I got a question, Mr. McKenzie, is there, is there anything from the state that prohibits your retail licensing and having residents on the premises? Or are you aware of any?
No.
Checked.
In other municipalities and, and more metropolitan areas, there are tons of mixed-use buildings that also have marijuana retail.
Okay.
Willie, are those in, are those in Michigan?
Yeah, in Michigan.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So is this something that we, we feel that we can move forward on as far as discussions? To the commissioners?
I'm open to it.
Yeah, I'm willing to, I'm willing to look it over.
I'll look it over. It's, I'm concerned about it may be snowballing to other properties. But I, I need some more information on it, for sure.
And, and my concern is that, you know, we're just, just getting to the point where we're stabilizing this district. And now when we throw something new into it, you know, we basically open up an entirely new can of worms. And, and again, a rehashing of, of prior decisions as well comes up. So that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, thank you, Mick.
Might be a little too soon.
Okay, Roger is not there. My feeling is that we, you know, we can, we can, in the future, discuss this. Not saying yes, we're not saying no, but it's, it's. Roger?
Yes, sir.
Just getting a, kind of a straw poll, your feelings on it?
Oh, yeah, well, the way we're talking with the restrictions and everything else, we're looking at a whole different ballgame. It would be a safety factor. And it would also be like the young lady said about the rental, place to live. With that looking, considering that, yeah, I'll talk about it.
Okay, alright, so it's, it's Mike and Zach, and I need to, it's probably something that we look at in the future?
Well, we'll talk to Willie and find the best way and the most appropriate way for this to move forward. If he chooses to do so based on his feelings with the board. It's, obviously, he doesn't, you know, completely know, but there's, there's a chance that, you know, he could still move through the process and, and you guys could say no, so. But, yeah, I think given the, the, you know, we do anticipate something moving forward. And we'll work with the applicant to, to see what he wants to do, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate your time tonight.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, now we have, this time, there will be public comment. And public comment is limited to three minutes. Name and address, please. And I will notify the speaker at two minutes and thirty seconds. So you have thirty seconds more to speak. And at three minutes, at the three-minute mark, the mic will be muted, so. So if anybody is in the public that would like to comment, please unmute your mic. Name and ad, name and address, please.
Okay, first, we'll, we'll ask, I think it was the Butler's, that's seven, six, one, eight.
No comment, thank you.
What, are you commenting about the, the marijuana apartment or everything that's been talked about? I'm a little uncertain how this works.
You can, you can comment on anything.
Related to the city.
I'll go back.
Well, we've already expressed our opinions, and I can't stress it strong enough how badly we feel about having a oversized hotel. And the importance of preserving and protecting our natural resources, which is why most people come to Manistee and stay. It's, it's irreplaceable, it's immeasurable. And so asking that you protect and preserve that in however way possible. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to, I think it was Richard Blue.
Okay, next we'll go to, I think it was Richard Blue.
No comment. Thank you.
Diane? Do you have any comments?
Um, I, I was just for the marijuana part.
And then we'll ask you, Erin, do you have anything to say?
Uh, no, thank you.
That is Zach.
I believe that's everyone.
All right, thank you.
Moving along, staff reports.
All right, so while I have you all here, um, I don't know if you've received um, the invitation for the RRC um, re, ready redevelopment community uh, notice for the ready redevelopment sites and and prioritizing them in the meeting that's taking place on February ninth. Um, you guys will, um, are invited to attend and encouraged to, to represent not only the planning commission, but in Shelley's case, the zoning board of appeals. Um,
I'm feeling.
So um, we, we highly encourage you guys to attend, um, make, you know, your voices heard. Uh, you know, that's a, that's a big thing as far as priors, prior, prioritizing those sites. Um, because many of those sites are the ones that were developed within the last year. Um, so you'll see like the, the, you know, um, the old boat restaurant there, but that's been bought by the um, uh, the, the guy from Holland, I can't remember his name, I apologize. You, um, and uh, you know, that was one of our sites on there as well as other ones. So um, you know, it's really important that we, we prioritize our sites. It helps out for economic development with Mark Miller. Um, he's able to, you know, then u- utilize those sites and those, that feedback um, and other endeavors, including their uh, their um, their developer uh, days that they're going to be taken care of. I'm sorry, guys, I'm really tired. My brain is just not working tonight.
I don't re, I don't recall seeing an invitation to that meeting. I don't know if I missed it or did everyone else receive it and it was just me?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday, I got an email yesterday.
Is there an agenda attached to that? I can't remember.
There's one page, one page.
Page, okay.
Yep. Did you get it, Pam?
I got it, yeah, I got it yesterday.
Shelley, did you get it?
Did.
Okay, Roger? Roger? Did you receive that?
I did not.
Okay.
I'll, I'll reach out to Mark and I think I have the, I can send it to you, Roger.
Yeah, I have four, four different email addresses, so.
And then so, um, guys, it's really important to attend. Um, I know Mark's giving me ideas of how, um, you know, a survey or whatnot. So please, please take part in that. Um, and uh, you know, I will, I will be there as well, so.
And and Mike, just if you would just resend that to me to to that uh, my Gmail address and then that way for sure I'll get it.
Um, really, other than that, that's, that's all I have. Um, you know, we, we do have our other staff plan. I don't remember if I told you, I was gonna, I was gonna have her on tonight with us. But um, she's, she had to go kind of a, a far away because again, housing's kind of an issue. So they're, they're staying with people in Luddington that they know. Um, and I wanted her to get ahead of the the snow and I knew she had something else to take part in this evening. But I do want to introduce you to her. She'll be handling uh, Onecma Township, Arcadia Township and Barely Township. Her name is Katie Mel and um, you know, we're really excited to have her. She's a young, um, lots of energy. And uh, you know, really happy to be here. So um, we also stole her from Genesee County with Zach, so their loss is our gain, so.
What, what's, uh, can you spell her last name?
M E H L. So Mike Echo of Talima.
I wonder if she's related to a friend of mine from Big Rapids, got the same last name.
No, Mike was in the military, so.
I still remember when I was in the, when I had to go through the gas mask drill, uh, they would ask you to spell your name phonetically. And when it came to me, the guy said, spell it phonetically backwards.
I just remember the, the chamber and that, it's not a fun time.
Trying to give your, give your name and rank in MOS is another thing.
So um, that's really what I have for you guys. Uh, again, I just want to emphasize, we do not have a uh, an official application for the Lake Shore project. Um, I I anticipate seeing it very soon, guys, I really do. Um, and you know, as soon as we get through, we get through the site plan, we'll get it out to you. We'll put it on the website for public review. Realize that, um, you know, the public's obviously very interested in it. So um, I hope that they realize that there are, there are individuals and staff members are listening to their concerns. Um, and you know, I think that when we finally get a official application and you, you will see that, that a lot of these concerns have been addressed, so.
Mike, is there any movement on the Spirit of the Woods project? Any?
Not currently, so um, no, I will say that I, I, let me choose my words here. No, we do not have an official application on it, so let me, let me first start out with that. And I think that, that we'll see probably later, later in the year. Uh, I think it's been pushed right, but I I don't know how much, so.
Okay.
A lot of negotiations going on on that project.
It's, it's, I really couldn't even tell you when I anticipate seeing it. So.
Zach, do you have anything? Nope, I think Mike's covered everything. Okay, best for last, Nancy?
Nope.
Okay, okay, we'll go around the screen rather than around the room. Bob?
Uh, nothing, just everybody be careful, they drive anywhere tomorrow.
Pam? Yeah, Nick?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Shelley?
It's before eight o'clock, I just want to.
It's after seven thirty.
And best to the whole ass, Roger?
Uh, no, uh, nothing at this time. Thank you very much.
All right, and I have nothing. Just want to thank Stack and everyone that attended. Uh, like, reiterate what Bob said, just be careful out there. It's a little snowy, which is great. Uh, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, adjourn.
Adjourn, motion.
Yes.
Second.
To adjourn.
That, we adjourn. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Uh, be careful.
Good night.
Take care, guys.
Good night.
Good night.